Order the regular meeting of the Village Board of Trustees for Tuesday, October 1, 2024. Please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item up is to approve the minutes of the, if I got the right meeting, September 17th, 2024 meeting. Go ahead.
Moved per the minutes of the Village Board of Trustees meeting of September 17th, 2024.
Second. Any changes? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Trustee Paschama?
Stain.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Siffler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Banky?
Aye.
President's Report, the annual Hinsdale Fall Family Festival will be Saturday, October 12, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in Burlington Park. This free event includes free pumpkins, a costume contest, inflatables, food, entertainment, crafts, and trick-or-treat treating sponsored by Sponsored Tables. Fire Department's annual silent party, silent parade, and police and fire open house. The Fire Department will participate in its annual silent parade as a tribute to fallen firefighters and fire victims on February, I'm sorry, Friday, October 11th. This is the 29th year that the parade has taken place. The Hinsdale Fire Department is one of the founding departments of this event. A brief remembrance ceremony will take place at the Hinsdale Fire Department just prior to the beginning of the parade. The parade will begin at 7:00 p.m. and will proceed west along Chicago Avenue through Hinsdale, Clarendon Hills, Westmont, Donnersgrove, and Lyle. And the police and fire departments will host their annual open house also on Saturday, October 12, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. There will be many activities, including live demonstrations along with station tours. That takes us to the next item, citizens petition. Any citizen wishing to speak to the board on any matter, on or off the agenda, now is your time.
Thank you. My name is John Bloomfield. I live at 519 Fuller Road, which is the corner of Fuller and Felipe. I've lived there for almost 20 years, and many of the residents from that corner are here as well. And so I know you've got on the consent agenda the approval of the H.R. Green contract, but we wanted to have kind of a brief statement in terms of our level of concern.
Sure.
So, as I said, we've lived there for 20 years. In August of 2014, there was a huge storm, like three and a half inches in an hour, and we didn't flood. And it never flooded until June 2021, when the construction by the tollway caused the flooding. So appreciate, I've worked with Kathleen quite a bit, and others, George on the staff, and they've been very helpful, and so we appreciate that. We have concerns, obviously, the tollway is huge, this is a small portion of their total project, and we want to make sure that we're fine. As of this year, in July 14th, we had another storm, big storm, but nothing like we'd had in the past. And the streets were flooded to the point where, you know, the police had to block things off because it was deep enough, it would probably have caused, you know, trouble to cars and that. And what was really concerning was hours after the rain had stopped, it still wasn't draining. So our concern is something has permanently changed.
Yep, yep.
And so we appreciate that you're doing the study. We do have three asks for that, which I think just are to help the study along. One is, they intend to do a site visit, we would like to be notified and be able to see them there, so we can provide context, et cetera.
You're talking about the engineers who are going to report?
Yes, the H.R. Green, when they come out, because they had committed to that.
Makes sense.
Second, have a repository for photos that could be given to H.R. Green.
Sure.
Talked to George today, and he said that shouldn't be a problem.
Right.
And then the third thing is that they had said that they would provide weekly updates, and we'd like those to be made public, again, just so that we can kind of be kept informed and, you know, rather than wait till the end and say, wait a sec, we have an issue, this, this way we can work again with the village.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with that. The only thing is that sometimes these engineering studies require some discussion about what the right solution is, right? I mean, so I'm not sure, you know, it's kind of an iterative process. I mean, we, we weekly updates where we are, but I mean, I, I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to have a conversation with the residents about what we propose as a final solution, rather than, you know, this may be a solution, this may be a solution, you know what I mean? I'd rather, I'd rather have fully baked bread from our side that we can talk about.
And I can appreciate that.
Yeah.
The challenge is, by the time the bed is, bread is baked, we have no decision.
No, no, it wouldn't be the decision making, it would be what we get from the consultant will be finalized, and then we'll talk to you about what they're recommending.
Right.
And then what we do.
And, and our concern is, if there are things that they make assumptions or what I'm, and again, you know, we'll participate, we'll hopefully meet with them, but, you know, I've been involved in my professional life with a lot of these studies.
Sure.
Midpoint, and there are times when they just miss something.
Yeah.
And you want to be able, and we've lived it, we're there, and so, and I don't see any downside to it.
No, I don't either, I don't either.
So, that would be the ask.
Yeah. Now, that, that sounds fair. And, and I know you have some of your neighbors here, and I know, you know, that a lot of times people bring multiple people to, you know, impress upon us the urgency and, and gravity of the situation. In my view, flooded areas of the village are the village's job. That's one of our primary jobs, and we've had some good success in fixing flooded areas over the years. And so, you know, I plan, we plan to do the same thing here.
And, and we're very excited about that success.
And we're, and so the plan is, we, you know, we have on the agenda tonight to hire a consultant, right, to, to do the work. They will make a recommendation, and then the issue that will come before the board is what that recommendation is, and more importantly, how much it will cost.
Sure.
And then we'll try to fix, put it in a budget, if we can, if it costs less than, I'm not, I can't give you a dollar figure, but if, if it's a reasonable cost, we may be able to fit it into next year, but if it's, if it's requires more money from us, it may be the year after. But this is certainly, flooding is, that's our bread and butter. That's one of the things that we do for residents. So, you, you know, you, you, not everybody has to stand up and tell me about all their flooding, and I, I get it, and if, but if you want to do that, that's fine.
No, it's just, we wanted to know that this was not one person, that is a big deal.
Right.
And, you know, five feet of water in the basement for an area that's never flooded.
Right. And you, and you do appreciate, we, we did have a consultant that did a draft report, and they went out of business.
Yes.
Okay, so that, that's one of the reasons why we're a little bit slower in getting this done.
No, I understand that completely. And as I, I mean, our goal is that we can sleep at night when it rains.
Yeah.
And, you know, yours is to do the same in terms of making.
I get it, I get it.
You do, and like I say, I just wanted to do those three asks, and just by show of, of interest that you know how important it is to all of us.
We will do what you ask.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sure, you don't want to tell me about terrible flooding?
No, no.
Okay, we get it, we get it.
I would just like to just talk to the engineering company.
Yeah, we will, well, you, you can. I mean, you seem to have some experience with this, and so.
Right, and their pension bonds over on 47th, when those went away, did that take any excess flow?
Right, right.
You know?
It's, it's, one of the things we're obviously doing is working with the tollway, and I know the staff has a meeting with the tollway engineers to talk about the impact of what they're doing on your neighborhood and other neighborhoods. And so, and we also want to make them aware of what we're doing, and also to the extent we can get them help pay for some of this, we're going to do that, too.
No, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to... I'm sorry? Oh, yeah, you can leave if you want, I'm sorry. No, no, this isn't church, you don't have to stay the whole time. Okay, Matt?
You can stay if you want, but... Next item is scintillating, so. So now we're at item 6A, which is a first read, this is a resolution determining the estimated property tax levy for 2024. The total estimated levy is going to be $12,909,821. That's an increase of 4.15%. But let me go over that in greater detail as to how that's determined. So the, the levy is generally speaking capped at the lesser of 5% and CPI for the previous year plus new construction. So as you know, inflation's gone down a little bit, so CPI for this year, or at least as of 12/31/23, is 3.4%. So that's the basic increase. And then you can also increase it plus new construction. So the estimated new construction is based on the 2023 building permits value, which is 49 million. So to determine the increase in EAV, divide that by three, so that's 16.33 million, that's the, the amount that's attributable to new construction. If the actual amount is less, we'll decrease that amount. So the, the increase in the capped portion of the levy is 4.19%. So that's $8,740,598. And so that's going to be allocated as follows. There's going to be the police and fire pension, we have required contributions for both of those. The police pension is going to be $1,358,436. That's an increase of $363,558. This amount is determined by an actuarial calculation, there's not really too much say we have in what those amounts are. The fire pension is going to be $1,396,669. That is an increase of $95,665. But as I will go through in a second, part of that is actually exempt from our overall cap. And then the remainder of that capped amount, we split equally between police and fire protection, so that's $3,027,663 to each of police and fire after the, the pension amounts. So then we have some uncapped amounts on top of what is capped, and that total uncapped amount is $334,804. As I said, there's a small piece of the fire pension that is uncapped, that's $69,833. Then we have an amount for our Gateway Special Recreation Association, which is our program for, a recreational program for disabled people who live in the village. That amount is $93,996. And then we have one debt payment, which is not abated. This is our 20, or sorry, 2019 bonds, and that unabated debt payment is $170,975. So when you add up the capped amount and the uncapped amount, our total estimated village levy is going to be $9,075,402. That's an increase of 4.14%. Then you add to that the library levy, that's going to be ultimately determined by the library board, but for purposes of this resolution, we're going to use the, the maximum amount that we can do based on CPI new construction. So that amount for the library will be $3,833,119. So again, our total estimated levy for both the village and the library is going to be $12,908,521, sorry, $821. And that is, again, a 4.15% increase. Carrie, anything else you'd like to add?
I think you got it the first time, it's 12, 908, 521.
Oh, 521, okay. Very good.
But everything else, spot on.
Got it. Great. Any, any questions from the trustees?
Just, just one comment, I mean, we, we, you know, we think about whether or not to increase the levy every year, but recently, and particularly this year, the pension costs have gone up quite dramatically for police and fire. So, you know, this increase is basically, you know, just covering costs as they, they go up. And, and I think that, as all the trustees know, from any residence tax bill, only 7% of the property tax bill goes to the village, the rest goes primarily to the schools. But, you know, as you, as they say in this report, that 7% of each residence property tax goes to the village, that amount, you know, is approximately 43% of our, our general fund. So while we only take 7% from residence and property tax, it's close to half of the money that we, that we have and to spend. And I think that, I'm not sure the exact numbers on the police and fire pension, but they, the contribution required to make this year has jumped substantially from last year.
That's correct. The, the pension portion has gone up 20%.
20%, so, so the reason why we, you know, we are basically just trying to keep our head above water. We're not making these increases and, you know, you know, spending the money frivolously. This, these, this money's needed to cover pension obligations, which are imposed by the state.
And increases in salaries, increases in the cost of everything we're buying.
Exactly, exactly.
And, and the thing about these increases is that, because, because the increase is capped every year, we can't sort of, if we didn't do it one year, we can't make it up in a later year.
Right, right, it's perpetual.
You, you, you lose that increase forever if you, if you don't.
Right, right.
So what are the underlying factors that are causing the pension obligation to jump by 20%?
It's mostly, well, let me, let me take a stab at it. I mean, it's, it's mostly changes in the actuarial tables. So, so as you have, the actuary tables result in people living longer, the amount of money you have to put in to fund the pension goes up. And I think over the, since I've been present, those actuarial tables have changed dramatically in favor of requiring more funding. And there was a point in time, back many, many years ago, when we were fully funded, and the state legislature then made changes to the pension, like it was the later of the firefighter or the firefighter spouse, that, that extended the benefits to cause all municipalities to be underfunded. And there are other things that were given to the pension, to the pension org, process that caused almost all municipalities to be underfunded. I mean, it's, it's not as though any, most municipalities aren't trying to fully fund police and fire pension, it's just that when we get close, oftentimes the rules change to make it more difficult, either, either the laws regarding who's eligible for pensions or the actuarial tables that require us to put more money in. Those are the main drivers.
And the performance of the market.
And, and the performance of the market. And when the market's doing good, we put in less, when the market's doing bad, we put in more.
It's been doing great for the past two years, so I hate to see what it looks like about it.
Despite that, despite that, we're putting more money. Have I, did I miss anything?
No, the only thing I'd add is, the, the benefits, as you noted, are set by state statute. So the, the length of time that an officer has to work, the benefits that they receive when they retire, the village has no control over, that's all state statute. The assumptions used in those actuarial evaluations, also the village has no control over, those are formed by the two downstate pension boards. So basically, they tell us, these are the assumptions you have to use, these are the benefits you have to provide. You put that into the valuation, out pops a number of, here's your contribution that you have to fund, and, you know, we're, the only way we can really do it is through the property taxes.
But that's a new...
That's new.
That's new since the, the...
Consolidation.
Because it used to be that we hired the actuary, and the state has now taken that over, and we're given the numbers, we're given the actuarial table, and basically, as Carrie said, run it through the, the, the actuarial tables, and we come, a number pops up, and that's what we have to fund. Okay, anything else?
Yeah, so, so this resolution will go to a second read at our next meeting, and then in November, we'll have the actual ordinance and, and abatements of the, of the debt payments where there's alternate revenue sources, and that'll be in November. So this is the first of a series of four meetings where we'll be talking about this.
Thanks, Matt. Luke?
Which moves us to Agenda Item 6B, and this is a first read to approve a professional services contract with TESCA Associates in the amount of $41,000. TESCA Associates is a planning and community development consulting firm that has provided services to staff on an as-needed basis. I would note, we have discussed this matter during the budgeting process, and the 2024 community development budget includes $50,000 for outside consultants to help staff with ongoing work. To refresh everyone's memory, we discussed the $50,000 line item budget versus adding an additional part-time personnel to the community development staff. During the budgeting process, we determined that it was more economical and better utilization to go with a consultant route, primarily because a lot of the needs in the community development department are, you know, peaks and valleys, and they can adjust the workflow with a consultant on an hourly basis, according to that. I would note that TESCA has been working with staff since April of this year, and projects that they've been working on have included landscape and screening text amendment, which we have forwarded a plan commission, is coming back to us. If you recall, the situation that we had on Ogden, we wanted to increase the amount of landscape screening between residential areas and commercial, that was the catalyst for that. Also, all of the work that was done on historic preservation initiative or Title 14, TESCA had a hand in that. And then most recently, we forwarded a plan commission, changes to our lighting ordinance, which is currently, as I said, sitting at plan commission, and it'll come back to us in the next few months. Future work is, future work by TESCA is anticipated to be, as I said, finishing the lighting, lighting code text amendment, and also the landscaping and screening text amendment, an update to our sign code, and review of sign permit applications as they come in. I would note that for any review work that TESCA does for applicants or real estate projects that are ongoing, we actually bill the applicants for that, but a lot of these projects that I've been talking about have all been staff-oriented at the direct, or staff-initiated at the direction of the Board of Trustees, so we're not getting reimbursed by applicants for that, for these matters. I would also note that staff is being diligent and using, on less complicated work, they use associates, and more complicated work, they use principal levels, which bill at differently hourly rates. And, you know, with that, I would, the work that they've done, at least that I've reviewed so far, has been very good. What is your sense, Rob?
We've been, we've been really happy with their, with the work so far. We've, we've gave some certain stakeholders in the community, had them review both the landscape screening ordinance, the portlet plan, as well as the, the lighting ordinance, and we've received really good feedback. Bethany probably knows better than anyone the quality of their work.
Let's open up to questions from trustees. Nope. Hearing none. Second consent agenda for this next time? Yeah. Thank you. So Alexis, do you have the accounts payable?
Move to approve payment of the accounts payable for the period of September 13th, 2024 through September 19th, 2024, in the aggregate amount of $1,413,743.09. Nine cents is set forth on the list provided by the village treasurer, as of which a permanent copy is on file with the village clerk.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Trustee Paschama?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Siffler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Banky?
Aye.
That brings us to consent agenda items 7B through E. Can I have a motion with respect to those consent agenda items?
A move to approve consent agenda items 7B through 7E.
Second. And just so it's clear, that the, the contract that the residents were here about is consent agenda item 7B, which is the contract with H.R. Green to complete the lane drainage study in, for the amount of $26,425, which is, which is what, what the residents here were asking us to approve tonight. Roll call vote with respect to these items?
Trustee Paschama?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Siffler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Banky?
Aye.
Okay, Matt, second read?
Yes, so this is item 8A, second read. It's a Class A liquor license for Gone Grazy, which will be located at 19 West First Street, and is owned by Janice Gergis. The store offers pre-made cheese and charcuterie boxes and boards, custom grazing tables, fruit, salads, gift baskets, and supplies to make charcuterie boxes and boards. Customers will be able to have a glass of wine or beer onsite with charcuterie, and the applicant also wants to be able to sell bottles of wine at the store. The applicant does catering, but that does not include alcohol sales. Have all the materials at this point been submitted for the application?
It's, it's almost complete.
Okay, okay. And I understand that the police department has investigated the applicant and recommends approval. I was not at the meeting where the first read for this was considered, but I understand that the applicant was told that she did not have to come back today. And again, just as a reminder of how this works with the liquor licenses, formally, we increase the number of A3 liquor licenses, and then the liquor commissioner, President Akali, will recommend and award the license. And again, this will be after all the materials have been finally submitted. I don't think the applicant is here yet. Any questions? In that case, I will move to approve an ordinance, approving the issuance of a Class A3 liquor license for Gone Grazy LLC, Doing Businesses Gone Gravy, in the village of Hinsdale, DePage and Cook Counties, Illinois, 19 West First Street.
Second. Roll call vote?
Trustee Paschama?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Siffler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Banky?
Aye.
I had to go to Google to figure out what a charcuterie board was. But now I know. Okay, that takes us to...
Probably had many.
Yeah, unbeknownst to me.
Yeah.
I heard Michelle makes a good one.
Yeah.
I've had many.
First time I heard it, I don't know, first time I heard the word. Luke?
Oh, yes, which moves us to Agenda Item 8B, and this is a second read to amend Section 6-12-3 Schedule 3D, four-way stop sign intersections, and Section 612-3 Schedule 3B, two-way stop intersections for the village code. Specifically to replace the current two-way stop signs that go east-west at the intersection of Fourth and Grant with a full four-way stop. Resident input led to the police department to investigate this intersection, a comprehensive investigation. There have been three crashes within the past six months, however, only five crashes within the past five years. And while this data does not alone warrant a four-way intersection as detailed by the manual on uniform traffic control devices, which the police department and this board tries to follow, I believe there are extenuating circumstances that exist at this location which leads the police department to believe an exception is warranted. And I want to, I want to, I want to emphasize, I have here before, I think it's important that we follow these, because if we put a stop sign up at every intersection, then people just aren't going to follow any of the stop signs. So I think that that is important. But specifically, the exceptions here is that the intersection is located close to St. Isaac's, also the Hinsdale Middle School, Madison School, and fairly close to the high school, so four locations, I think it's within half a mile of here. The pedestrian signs at the crosswalks on Grant Street are being misinterpreted as a four-way stop sign. So as the pedestrian signs are up and the opposite cars can only see the back of them, they're interpreting those as stop signs and thinking that the traffic that way is going to stop. St. Isaac's dismissal procedures push traffic eastbound on Fourth toward Grant, right at this intersection. There's also been an increase in the enrollment at St. Isaac's of approximately 50 families this year. And lastly, while the police department originally suggested they put crossing guards to alleviate the issues during the high-traffic times when school starts and lets out, the schools are just having a very hard time staffing, staffing crossing guards. At the last meeting, there were probably five or six different residents that got up that live right at that intersection, got up and spoke in favor of it. We had a very small discussion about it, but there was, all trustees seemed to be supportive of it, but I'd open it up to questions at this time. Hearing none, I will make a motion to approve an ordinance amending Section 6-12-3 Schedule 3D, four-way stop sign intersections, and also 6-12-3 Schedule 3B, two-way stop intersections of the village code of Hinsdale specifically for Fourth and Grant Street.
Second. Roll call vote?
Trustee Paschama?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Siffler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Banky?
Aye.
By the way, I should point out that the day after our first read of this, the signs are up, so kudos to George's team, getting it done. Impressive.
Yep. So that takes us to discussion items. I'd like to give the board an update on... I'd like to give the board an update on Sixth Street project. So we've had residents come before the board from Sixth Street to talk about what we're going to do there next year. We, we deferred construction from last year until the upcoming year, the, 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 next year, two thousand twenty-five, to complete the work on, on Sixth Street. The, the thought is, we're still going to go out with two design, the all-brick street and the hybrid brick street. And as we talked about before, the village was willing to put in eight hundred thousand dollars towards doing the hybrid street, which would do all the work for the hybrid street, make it a hybrid street, or contribute eight hundred thousand dollars to the all-brick street with the residents being responsible for the, for the delta between the eight hundred thousand dollars and the, and the cost of an all-brick street. So trustee Banky and I met with Sixth Street residents a little while ago, about, what, a week ago? And we talked about presenting an SSA to the board. And as you all know, an SSA is a special service area where a group of residents on Sixth Street would agree to have their property taxed assessed to pay for the portion that the resident should pay for. And so that process has to start soon, like at the next meeting. Because the way the construction project will work, we're going to, we're going to put it out to bid in January of, of next year, open the bids in February, and probably award the bid in March, and then have construction begin in the spring and proceed through the fall. So in order to get that done next year, we have to line up the financing. And state statute requires certain, this, this, you know, notice periods and certain timeframes between when you first propose an SSA, have the public hearing about it, and then the village board adopts it. In order to do that, before we, we open the bids, we have to start with the village board approving the SSA process. And so we're going to, I'm going to come next, next time on the fifteenth to ask the board to approve that. Then the public hearing will be held on December fifteenth. So there's a, there's a period of time between when the village board approves it, we actually have a public hearing. Public hearing, residents can come and object to it or, or decide, you know, what they, what they want to do. We'll give notice to all the residents of this. The thing, the, the way we are structuring this is, we're going to have a certain amount for, you know, based upon the budget and our eight hundred thousand dollars that we're going to set as the SSA value. There is, there is a possibility that, that the amount that the residents will pay will go down, not up, but go down based upon, you know, our ability to, to, you know, use other funds to, to, in, in connection with the project. So what, what we're really doing is a placeholder with the hope that it comes down. If it, in, in the way an SSA works, say you have an SSA for just picking a number, a million dollars, and everybody's assessed, you know, the proportionate part of the million dollars. If you then decide that you only want the residents to fund five hundred thousand dollars, it would all go down pro rata to, to reduce it. So you, you can't, you can't increase an SSA, you can, you can reduce it. So we're going out with an SSA that is the maximum amount that we would require residents to pay. And hopefully, by the time we get to the public hearing, and certainly by the time we get to where we're actually going to implement the SSA, that number will have gone down. But it leaves the optionality to the residents to approve a, a bigger SSA if things don't work out the way I hope they do. So, so we just want to start the process. Does that all make, make sense?
Have the boundaries of the SSA been determined?
They have. The number of, the number of residents has, yes.
Is it basically just the, the lots on Sixth Street or...
I think it's like thirty-six or thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight properties and their lots with an address or a budding Sixth Street.
Right, so it would be if you, I think if you have a driveway on Sixth Street, even though your house isn't on Sixth Street, you'd be part of it. I think that's the way it's, it's configured.
Just one clarification, December fifteenth is sixty days from the date we adopt the ordinance. It's not going to be on the fifteenth, that's a Sunday.
Right.
But it'll be the week of the sixteenth.
Six, yeah, sixty, the sixtieth day is, is December fifteenth, but we're not going to have a meeting on a Saturday. So, so we have shortly thereafter. So this is basically, you know, as we all, we want this street to be all brick if it's at all possible. So, you know, I want, we want to try to work to reduce the cost of the SSA, but have an SSA out there that represents the maximum amount, because otherwise, we have, if we scuttle it, we can't increase it. So this, this lets us kind of kick the can down the road for a while, figure out how much we're actually going to have, need from, from, from residents, and hopefully, the number goes down. And then we can make the decision with a full picture of what it would cost. Okay? Does that make sense?
Okay.
All right. Hundred fifty.
Our memorial building plaza project is looking fantastic. It remains on schedule and it remains in budget. Our furniture, I'm told, has arrived, and we're very excited about that. And we are hoping to have a date for the dedication ceremony coming to all of you very soon.
Great, looks good. Looks really good. Any tollway updates?
No.
Any citizen wishing to say anything at this point? Trustee comments? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, yep, go ahead.
I was here for the, the reason issue, but I was, I just come at this meeting. We recently found a dog when we were just, that we ended up returning to a neighbor, and someone on our street recently lost a cat. And it came to my attention that the police department has to take lost animals to a shelter in Wheaton, because there's not a deal with the Hinsdale Animal Shelter to house lost pets there. And it just, you know, I feel like if you lost a dog, the last thing you're thinking about is going to a shelter that's like forty-five minutes away. And anyway, I just thought, since I'm at this meeting anyway, maybe I'd bring that up, because it seems like it would make sense to have an agreement with the Hinsdale Animal Shelter, so that lost pets are taken there instead of a shelter that people might not think to look at if they lost a animal.
Well, and, and we do have cages in the police station, so dogs are kept there for a period of time to see if the owner shows up.
Yeah, they said a couple hours, but I was just like, you know, sometimes people don't, you know, I don't know if everyone would think to, to look there.
I can attest that, I can attest that our police department does everything in their power to relocate...
Agreed.
...lost animals to the homeowners. I had a dog who would dig under the fence, and so there was no way I could keep her. And Officer Nina at the Hinsdale PD would always bring her home. So I know that, that's the last resort.
Yeah.
And it, and I do think it's a lot longer than a couple hours.
Yeah, I think it's a couple days.
Okay, I didn't know that. When I, I had called about the dog we found, and they were like, oh, we'll keep him for a couple hours and then take him to Wheaton.
I think it's longer than that. I mean, we make every effort to reunite dogs with their owners.
Oh, absolutely, no, I thought everyone handled it, handled it well. But I just noticed, like, we found this dog, we saw a lost cat, we saw multiple other lost, like, animal postings, so it was just a thought.
Yeah, and we're still open to negotiating an agreement with the Hinsdale Humane Society.
I don't know how that all, how that works.
It's cost. It's a cost issue.
I'm sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no one else? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Trustee Pashima?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Siffler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Banky?
Aye.
Thank you.